...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
We'd ask, did you please turn off your cellphones? Okay, we have one business item before we get to the budget hearing, and that is around the BOSI's commitment. I move that upon the recommendation, Superintendent, the 2013-2014 commitment for BOSI services be approved as presented.
Second discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, I turn it over to you to hear your budget hearing presentation.
Are you putting it up? Okay. I can put it, okay. Okay. Ready to start? We're presenting the 2013-14 budget this evening. Okay, thank you. Is that better? Let's see. What the purpose of the budget this year was that the Board of Education has was to develop a world-class school district in today's economic times, and that was a theme throughout the presentations from before. The Board felt it had to develop a fiscally responsible budget that reflect the ever more difficult economic times that we face in the United States today and what our residents also face. That was the budget goal when I got here. What are some of the budget facts for 2013-14? The proposed budget is $25,720,426. That reflects a budget-to-budget increase of 2.1 percent with a property tax increase of 1.99 percent. And then I also wanted to point out the allowable property tax cap for Eden was 2.92. So, we've stayed within the boundaries of that to present the property tax. But now I have some statistics I'd like to share with you when we look at why the budget's what it is. I thought, well, let's take a look at what enrollment over 10 years versus staffing has been here in Eden. This member wants to go. And I don't know if, yeah, do you think you can see that? If you look at enrollment over 10 years, which goes from 2003-4 to 1213, we've lost 13.23 percent of our enrollment. In the same time period, we've lost only 2.29 percent of our staffing. That's a pictorial graph, so you can see the bottom is the staffing, it remains level, and you can see the decline in the enrollment, what we're facing. I also wanted to look at our revenue sources, so I took 10 years of property tax and looked at 10 years of state aid. When you look at property tax over 10 years, it's increased 66.87 percent, while state aid has only increased 25.45 percent. So what does that mean? Revenue sources, they're out of balance, and staffing and enrollment seem out of balance, so the Board had to take a look at those factors and make some decisions. You can see the same thing with the aid, and you can't keep raising taxes and decreasing state aid, it doesn't work. They also have to present the budget in three components. The three components are, as they're required by law, administrative, program, capital, what these numbers reflect. I mean, sometimes this is somewhat confusing because administrative isn't just administrators, it's any component in a budget that is reflective, that doesn't directly touch the children, like legal, like some health insurance, like some cleaning, well, no, cleaning is in capital, and I could give you that in a minute, but it also, like, some of the technology services, some things, so that's very misleading when the state came up with those definitions, but that's what we live with. It breaks into 11 percent of your budget is administrative, 73 percent of your budget is in program, capital, which reflects your school debt, and also your facilities' costs, and the people that are associated with that. Many times, people think, oh, maybe that includes transportation. No, transportation is under programs. Anything in administrative, excuse me, administrative is anything that doesn't directly touch a student or provide services or programming. And there's detail on that if anybody would want that. Now, I will go through what the, what changed in this budget, and some of these slides are from what we've presented throughout the budget process. What's different from last year to this year? The Board has reduced one administrative position. The third and fourth grade gifted and talented has been taken away. There's five faculty reductions. There was a $400,000 reduction in staff and/or benefits that are still being worked and to be determined. We took a 10 percent across the board reduction of materials and supplies, a 5 percent reduction in athletics, and non-mandated music and art, which would be things like your musical, that kind of thing, something that the state doesn't require you to do to get a region's diploma. The 5:00 PM bus run is no longer there, and then we also added in additional state aid of $231,801. And I know I've heard some talk of, well, we got more state aid, so why are we still cutting these things? That state aid number represents .09009 percent of the total budget, it's less than 1 percent. When you see, as I showed you before, the imbalance in revenue, it's got to come somewhere.
Okay, Lorraine, one other point we did add versus current budget, we did add a second grade teaching position.
Oh, true, true, we did, and I took those down.
And also decided to backfill the position in the elementary.
Right, because of enrollment. Yeah, I'll repeat that. We did add a position in elementary due to enrollment, and the Board also added a, replaced a retiring teacher in the elementary school due to enrollment also.
One in Joe P., one in the elementary.
The last point I'd like to cover tonight is what happens, what is a contingent budget, because this has changed over the past five years through state law significantly. Used to be, you could carry the budget forward, add 120 percent of CPI, whatever that was in the year. Beginning last year, the budget is required, if it's not passed, you have one more chance to vote. If it isn't passed again, you must freeze your tax levy. What does that mean? If that would happen here in Eden, the Board would, beside the cuts you saw tonight, would also have to find another $255,788 to cut out of the budget to carry forward. That's an important factor for people to realize, there still would be more cuts taken if the budget passed. The laws have changed, and that had just happened last year, so that's...
If it doesn't.
If it doesn't pass, sorry. The budget vote and election is on May 21st from 9:00 to 9:00 in the junior, senior high foyer. The budget, as I presented earlier, $25,720,426. And just through in an educational quote, "Learning is not attained by chance, but it must be sought with ardor and attended to with diligence," by Abigail Adams. And also, Eden's embrace educating in power.
Steve, are we allowed to ask questions about that PowerPoint or no?
You can, sure.
Sandy, I have a question. On that PowerPoint, you should talk about the administrative reductions, the teaching reductions. Do you think that there's possibly that you could find a way to not have those reductions within, in the budget?
Which reductions?
Such as the assistant principal position and some of the teaching positions?
So, one of the things that the Board asked me to do at the last Board meeting was to find a way to, was to find that $400,000 somewhere. So what I said that I would do was to go forward and take a look at a more traditional schedule. Not only to find extra, but to also firm up that five FTE, because originally in the block schedule, we knew that we were going after five, but one of them, we weren't really quite sure where it would fall out. Those numbers are not solid yet, so we have asked the secondary principal to take a look at a secondary schedule. For us, it is more traditional. He's just started that process, but it's the first, it's the first vet, if that's the right word for it. And so, as we take a look at what those numbers look like, there is a possibility, not just with the secondary schedule, but also with our health insurance rate changing for this coming year, for any retirements that are coming up, as Lorraine goes through all of the numbers, to get a better feel for what we actually are looking at.
I do have a question. And what teachers, do you know which teachers are looking at the shop? Because I know the shop lost two.
And we agreed to replace one of those for the coming school year. So the question that Mrs. Henry had was, is that two retirements are in technology, and the Board agreed to add back one. Okay, so that posting will come out soon.
Okay, at this time, we allow the opportunity for the public to make any comments that they'd like. It's standard process is you have two minutes to make your comment. We ask you to state your name and your affiliation with the district, and we do ask you to stay to two minutes, please.
Good evening, Bart Boner. I teach in the elementary building, the vocal general music program. I'm also vice president of the Eden Teachers Association. I don't have anything prepared. In this time when public education is being defunded, it's a difficult time for me and for teachers in this profession, in the profession. We, I happen to believe in education as a cornerstone of democracy, and I strongly believe in public education as a necessary cornerstone for democracy. It's very hard to watch what's going on right now. I, it's disheartening. I have worked, as many of you know, I was president of the Eden Teachers Association for five years. I have worked very hard at that time to bring the administration and the association together on a number of issues. We, Ms. Answell has been coming around at the buildings, talking about working together. We know how to work together. Any one of these teachers here will tell you, for years, that's been a hallmark of Eden, is that the teachers in this district know how to work with the administration. When I was hired here, that was one of the big things that I looked forward to. I came from Dunkirk. I taught six years in Dunkirk, and it was not quite that way. We know how to do that. It is not our fault that we are being attacked from the outside, not your fault either, but it's not our fault that we're being attacked and defunded. When I see things that look like they're pointing their fingers at us as though we are the problem, I have a hard time not taking it personally. We are not the problem. We know how to work together. Now, there's lots of details and anecdotes and stories I could give you about that, but I want to make that clear, that that, there's a strong feeling amongst many of our teachers, I know they feel the way I do. Check out the number of programs that we are, the teachers are the backbone of in this district, including Raiders Respond. We are the backbone of that program. That gets done in the buildings by the teachers. You want to do a photo op, you better include all the teachers. So, it's very hard to look at things when I feel like the finger's being pointed back at us as though we're the problem, that there's not enough money in this budget. We are not. There's another negotiation coming next year, we're aware of that. So I just want to, you can feel, I can tell you, you can probably tell that I feel this strongly. So, that's, I probably ought to use my two minutes.
Hi, I'm Tamara Howard, I'm president of the CSEA. I am also a district taxpayer, voter, and center of the children's community. That's what this means. You have to watch me, that's what this means. Okay, I'm looking, I look at the budget, this was the power I was going to start, but I was looking at the Comptroller's Report that was released back in 2011-12, which severely cited Eden as giving their excess fund balance grossly over the legal limit. They were over $1.5 million. I just wonder, where did that money go? You know, a big question. Then you go to the website, which hit itself, you know, the Eden District Financial Conditions and Health Insurance, and there's several places to hear about the district taking corrective action because there was too much of a fund balance. The unreserved fund balances represent uncommitted funds. There are, there's a surplus, there's been a surplus for years. Yeah, where did it go? It got put into other little reserve funds, bank somewhere. You have used a significant portion of the fund balances to increase the reserves. This is all on the website. You can look this up and read it, it's really interesting. Fund transfers to reserves are made without adequate public involvement. That's just, you haven't seen anything about how you're planning to decide where the fund balances are going to. Taxpayers are supposed to decide whether to use excess funds in this manner. Like I said, it's all in here, I could quote things. On the 2/25/13 meeting, you approved keeping 4.5 in unassigned fund balance in violation of the state law. It's in the minutes, it's in there. You have a goal for Eden to be in the top 10 percent of schools, but the slashing burden that you're doing now will be fortunate to maintain our standing. The draconian measures are going to decimate the ability for students to achieve what you wish for us to get to be a top 10 percent. You're focused on keeping the coppers blooded versus maintaining your staff, programs, and most importantly to me, as a CSEA member, the morale of the staff is under shutdown.
Sorry, that, Tamara, time is up, please.
Very quick, think of the repercussions of your actions, not just the money part. And just very quickly, as far as the NY44, that was, there's two different things, one that Amberson said, three groups went for it, you hid in the newsletter, nobody went for the NY44. It was said over and over. The timeframe was, did not allow this to happen. We have negotiations coming up. We are well past our date for negotiations. We should have been meeting March 1st. We are now going to May 20th, and our staff took a 20 percent paying decrease last contract for new staff, plus paid more for health insurance, and it's taken them eight years to get to a three-year staff in previous years. We gave the gift that keeps on giving to the district. Thank you.
I'd just like to clarify a couple of the comments there. Everything that was noted in that State Comptroller's Report was, took place, for most part, before any of us were on the Board. In fact, those are many of the issues that I had when I spoke to the State Comptroller to call attention to some of those issues. The money in those reserves is being used up each year because we have an imbalance between revenues and expenditures, and the reserves are being used up that way. The money that's expected to be left over from this year's budget is being rolled into covering the gap for next year, which is $1.6 million. So, that's where the reserves are going, that's what they're being used for, to cover the gaps, because we haven't made structural changes like every other district in the area.
I have a comment, Steve. I was looking online, we've gotten a lot of messages from a lot of the public, and someone had given me some links to look into, to compare some of the schools, the dates on those links were 2006, 2007. Everything has changed in the last five years. So, you've got to really make sure that the information is where they're getting their information. You really need to look where you're getting your information from.
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Earl Cooper, I'm an educator for 32 years in the West Santa Clara School District. I've been through many, many, I've lived 63, my 64 years here in Eden. I have never, ever seen budget cuts like they are in this school district. I have three granddaughters who'll be in the Eden schools next year. You're eliminating the gifted and talented program. I'm here for the kids. I'm not here for money or anything else like that, I'm here for the kids, and every other kid besides my grandchildren. You're eliminating the gifted and talented program, which my fourth grade granddaughter this year benefited tremendously from it. What percentage of the budget, by eliminating the gifted and talented program, is it, is it less than one, or less than 0.01 percent? The senior play every year, that takes a tremendous amount of work by the students. They, you're going to find the students there are benefit greatly from these extracurricular I want to thank Mrs. Henry and Mr. Burns for responding to my emails that I sent you, the email that I sent you. I cannot stand back and watch the school destroy itself, and that's what you're doing. This is not from a text that I'm written, it's from my heart. I cannot believe what you're doing to this school district. I graduated from here, my son graduated from here, my daughter graduated from here, and I hope that my three great children will get a quality education, but the way it seems, it's being destroyed.
Mr. Searney, I need to add a comment on this. Some of the people realize that New York State dictates about 95 percent of the budget. So to personal, to make it personal on the people on the budget is, I think, is very, very incorrect and wrong. New York State dictates quite a bit of budget, and to put it on, put it on personally, I think is incorrect.
Yes, I...
Good evening, my name is Sarah Rockwood-Clu, and I'm a teacher at Eden Junior/Senior High School. I have a very unique opportunity to see students for three years. I teach earth science, biology, and chemistry. I see them grow and mature as freshmen to seniors. I'm so grateful that I have the opportunity and privilege to educate these students. They look to us to make correct decisions with their interests in mind. I want them all to be well-rounded, caring, and successful individuals in society. It starts here with a good foundation. If we cut programs and have really large classes, we are doing a disservice to the future generations. I have gotten to know these students, I work with them every day, I know they, what they need from school. They need guidance and discipline, and above all, a solid education. With every teacher in this district, they strive to achieve this. Every single teacher strives to do to be the best for the students. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I want to be the voice for all those students who are very upset about the cuts being proposed. They have come to me very upset, some even in tears, saying that their concerns are not being heard, and feeling that their opinion doesn't matter. I value their thoughts, and that's why we need to stand up and fight for those kids. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Millie Burner, and I'm a sophomore here at Eden Junior/Senior High School. I'm studying to one day be a general practitioner in the medical field. I came here to speak behalf of a fair number of student body, we have two others who signed petition against cutting our teachers from the school. 255 members of the student body have put their signatures to the paper. We've also, 32 staff signatures from both teaching and non-teaching staff. I'd like to petition the removal of key teachers due to the size of classes. The area I'm going to, I need more individual education, and cutting our teachers is not going to give me that. Teachers are removed and class sizes increase, it would be more difficult for students to pay attention, teachers to control the class, and less opportunity for growth. Many students need individual help from teachers to understand the material. Some even go to teachers that are, might be cut. They don't even have that teacher. As a student trying to get a better education, I, in high school before I get to get a college degree, it seems better to have a smaller class of teachers we already have than to give birth to ones we need.
My name's Ally Hill, I'm a sophomore at Eden, and I came to Eden last year, my first year, because of the different time change, 80-minute classes, smaller classes. I'm telling you right now, I have one class, there's 25 students in it, and there is, the learning shouldn't be worth a penny now. Right now, on an 80-minute schedule, we have 24 minutes for changing classes back and forth. If we go to a 40-minute schedule next year, there'll be 44 minutes, take out the rest day, add it up over many, many times during the year, how many days of every week, that adds up. Testing for students, if you try to jam a test in 40 minutes, that's going to take up a lot of time for classes. Test, it'll be scaled down, you won't get enough running time. Computer classes, if your computer's not cooperating, it takes 10 minutes to load. People to get back in, you need that time. Let's say you get nine classes a day next year, and let's say homework takes 10 minutes, that's an hour and a half of homework, on average. And if you have classes every day, homework due every day, you're going to be up late, and you have sports and music coming with that. I know right now, I don't get home until 6:00 o'clock-ish, and the late bus, if there's no late bus, I will not get home until 6:30, 7:00, when my boy's going to work. As well as the musical, it was a great experience for me, and I don't think we should be cutting as much music as we should. That's basically it, but, and the study halls and advisement, I have a question on that, will you be cutting that each year? If you'll be cutting advisement and study halls? Because that's the time, I know, where kids get a lot of their homework on.
I can answer for you. If in fact, a schedule is changed next year to a more traditional schedule, which is what I come from, there are always going to be study halls, because a schedule can't be so perfect that you go every single day to a class. But that'll be up to the counselors and Mr. Graff to create that schedule so that you can get more classes. The more opportunities that you have in a day, whether it be six, seven, eight periods to get a class, the more likely you would be to get a class that you ask for. So that's why most schools are on a traditional, especially if the enrollments are small. One of the things that we do know is that the top schools are all on a traditional, so... So, although it is a change, excuse me? So, the top schools are on a traditional schedule, so what we would just...
All I know is that I came from a school with 40 minutes.
But you asked me, you asked me to share that for you, so I did. Okay, I'm just going to answer her question, so yes, there would be study halls. As for advisement, we're not far along enough in even seeking a change to understand where advisement could come from or what it would look like, because please understand, we've had just one day with Bosse's to try to take a look at the schedule, so we're nowhere near that.
I hope, just, for, I came from a school with many years of 40-minute schedules, and with sports, it's not, you have more, we have dinner sports every day, and here at Eden, it's like every single day, you're out at five, and if you have a game. That's where I came from, which was South San Antonio. I didn't get to bed until very late, and that wasn't even with sports every day or the music program we have here at Eden. So, I'm very concerned on the amount of education and homework time that we get.
Okay, thank you. I think it's live, try it.
Try it.
My name is Kayla Stamper, and I'm a junior at this school, and I'm studying for a degree in art, and then I'm going to tattooing and piercing. Many people think tattooing and piercing does require a lot of personal knowledge, but due to the fact that there is no college specifically for tattooing, I need that quality education that I will be getting from the school. I need chemistry, I need anatomy, I need personal finance, I need art classes, which are just painting and drawing, which are all electives that are threatened to be cut. As for the electives itself, creativity is a necessary part in this school. A lot of the boys in this school, in Eden, are all going, like, I can ask a lot of them, and they probably would say technology is their major thing, and I know a lot of the technology things are going to be cut. The electives that would, we would have in this school serve a purpose, and I and many other students will need these to become successful individuals. Please don't cut the teachers that are going to be making me a successful individual. Please don't cut the vice principal that's protecting me from all the students that are coming. Don't cut my English teacher, don't cut my math teacher.
Thank you.
Another broken leg.
No, I didn't break that leg. Hello, I'm Hannah Drew. I'm taking a sophomore in the looks of Eden Junior High School, Senior High School, but I'm actually a junior. I'm graduating a year early, and if we change to the 42-minute class schedules, a lot of homework I will have will be meaningless. I go home every night, I know that you all used to have 42-minute schedules, but I go home every night with my parents and my brother. I go to work every day, and I help my cousins with their kids, because they don't have enough money to stay home with them. You know, if I have too much homework, I'm not going to be able to help them. And also, when we do have 42-minute schedules, classes such as art, math, and languages, you're not going to be able to have enough time to go over anything, which means you don't have one-on-one help at all. You're going to take 10 to 15 minutes going over homework, and then the rest of the time, it's going to be quite blessing that we're not going to get all the way. Also, in art classes, as such as physics and history classes in general, you're going to need time to even learn any of the information. Many children, even like the 80-minute classes, need that 80 minutes to learn all of it. They need a break, a small break that most teachers give them to refresh themselves and just start over and think what's going on. Also, I talk to many of my friends who have been in 42-minute classes school. They came to this school, and their grades are not a lot better, beyond better than what they used to be there. It's going to be, we won't be able to get anything done, we're going to have too many classes. We just can't.
Hello, my name is Stacy Adrich. I'm a junior here at Eden Junior/Senior High School. And I mean, if you look at me, I don't look like an average student, or a popular kid, or a jock, or anything. I'm a very odd student, an odd person in general, and I've accepted that. And it's because all the teachers that I have had in this entire year have had the chance to one-on-one talk with me and actually given me a chance to explain myself more than how I look. If we have bigger classes, I'm just going to be shoved in the back and looked at like a freak. And I know, I have been in Eden, I've lived in Eden my entire life, and every year, it's gotten better and better with our 80-minute classes. I have honors physics, and that, having the 80 minutes, having advisement, study halls, I go to Mr. Myers as much as I can, because he's my physics teacher. And physics is hard for me, and I'll take honors because I want to go into medical and criminal justice. And it's just insane to try and fit such hard classes into a 40-minute period when I, in 80 minutes, find it difficult to understand some things. For math, we barely get through our lesson, and I'm still confused at some points. And if I try and go to advisement, that's the only way I can get any help. If we cut any of that, it's going to be impossible for any of the kids to keep their grades up unless they're perfect students. I'm not a perfect student. I get good grades in most of my classes, yes, but the few times I have gotten a bad grade, it devastated me, and I realized it was because I'm either in such a large class that I don't get one-on-one time to talk to the teacher because I'm confused about something, or it's because just in general, I don't understand it, and I wasn't smart enough to go talk to the teacher alone. So, trying to cut all the classes down, trying to take away any chance that a student can have to ask for help, is just insane, because it'll just lower the test scores, and it'll just make the school worse. And as the years go on, the grades keep getting lower and lower because we don't have time to learn. Thank you for listening to me, because I wasn't even planning on speaking today. I came in because I wanted to hear what was going on, I wanted to prepare myself for next year, because I'm going to be a senior, and I want to see this school become great, even for the grades younger than me. And I just, that's all I really can say.
Thank you.
Susan Lahom, a kindergarten teacher, and I hear about the rumors that have been going on the last few weeks about class size. I was given to understand that the class size, the average should be 22. That's what we were aiming for, and I can tell you this past year, I have a class of 29. And if we're aiming for 22, and I have a class of 29, if we're aiming, from what the rumor is, for 25, what are we going to have, over 30 students in a class? We're not going to be able to meet the students' needs. We are not. Most of you, when you went to school, were not in classes that were blended. We had self-contained. And we are now having classes that are blended to meet the needs of all the students, their IPs, their Bible boards, and then to meet the students that mainly are not identified or struggling with a certain subject. That will not allow us, in those class sizes, the studies have shown, 18 to the top end is 22. That's why I asked at the one time, you had the bottom number, which I understand. I do get that small classes, we cannot under this budget time afford that. But I asked at the time, what is our topic? And I still don't have an answer where to cut off for a small district. That's what makes us wonderful, that's what makes the teachers meet all the students' needs. I need to have an idea of, are we going to be over 30? Are we going to aim for, what is, what is the goal? What is your goal for class size? Because that truly is just important to meet every student's needs. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Michaela Sting, and I'm a sophomore here at Eden Junior/Senior High School. I'm striving to achieve a certificate in the HVACR field. I come before you today to bring to your attention an important, important matter. It has been brought to my attention that there are rumors going around that certain teachers' jobs are in jeopardy of being terminated off the case. If those teachers get terminated, then larger classes and less classes are both very detrimental to the student population. I know that many of the students that I have talked to are going to have to move, some of them have to go to private schools in order to get the education they need. Some of them don't learn well in larger classes. I know I myself cannot focus in my class of 20 students. So, with the students who have even greater handicaps than I do, it is going to be extremely hard for them to focus, and their test scores are going to go down, which is also going to reflect badly on Eden. Less classes means that highly esteemed colleges might not accept even, even graduates. I know I have heard a story of a teacher who went to a seminar, and a Rochester graduate did not get accepted into New York State colleges because there were no electives in her school. So, if all of these teachers get cut, then these electives will not benefit us as students. We need these electives to get into better colleges, to get into the professions that we need. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Clark. I'm a parent, I'm a coach, and a president of the Eden McCrossley Club, I have an eight-year-old son, and assume to be a parent gardener next year. I also teach in Orchard Park, and I've also stood at a podium in front of multiple different boards, all with business agendas, not necessarily educational agendas. One of the things we do as an association is we stand in solidarity when we speak on behalf of our children and our cause, which is education. So, I would ask if you would, and if you're here on behalf of children and education, this tends to get the message across. It also tends to be a little intimidating, okay? But the reality is, is that when I signed up to be a teacher, there was no target in the middle of my back. And when I walked down the street, and when I watched the news, for some reason, and I'm a big target, okay? For some reason, there's this huge outdrive of public education. The fact of the matter is, is that none of us would be sitting here in the careers that we picked. I chose to be a teacher, okay? I could have went into all kinds of other opportunities, could have been a plow driver, could have been a fireman. Well, firemen, policemen, anybody in the state tag, really has a target on their back these days. Is that fair? I don't think so, okay? The reality is, none of us would be here without the educators who put us here, and the efforts of ourselves, our families, and our communities. One of the things my father always taught me was, never forget where you came from. I grew up in West Santa Fe. I went to Orchard Park schools. As far as I was concerned, I had the best of both worlds. I had opportunities. I want my children to have those same opportunities, okay? Is that my 32nd beamer?
That means your two minutes is up, please.
Your two minutes are up?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think I've proved my point. Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
Nancy Kestner, I just got two points. For whatever reason that they decided that the 80-minute isn't working, and from the general consensus, 42 is too short, the logical answer is, you make it six 60-minute periods. 42 is not long enough. We all remember going into class and reviewing our homework and not getting time to learn anything new. My second point is a little more specific, is the AP History teacher. The kids are not here. I don't think there's a lot of juniors here, because they were here at 6 o'clock this morning for an hour and a half reviewing for their AP exam, and we only offer AP History and AP Chemistry. If you're not going to be able to go into those programs, you're eliminating a very important part of this program. I got a phone call from my college senior at 10 o'clock this morning going, what's this rumor of them cutting that position? What do I have to do? They can't be here because they're graduating from college this weekend, but on Monday morning, there's going to be an awful lot of college kids here, working very hard to save a very important position in their life. This is a teacher who has made them work, who has made them strive to be the absolute best that they can be. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jennifer Hale, and as many of you know, I'm new. My daughter Emily came to Eden last year. My husband and I are graduates of private education, but we moved to Eden because, well, it's wonderful. Emily had a wonderful year last year. I want to thank every teacher in this room that have done the fastest job with these kids. We didn't have play, we didn't have music. We had 40-minute classes, and they worked good. It is our job to prepare our children to go out into society and be productive, and as a society in the United States of America, we are failing ethically. I'm not a teacher. I actually work in the medical field. I know nothing about teaching. I'm here because my daughter is so upset about the changes that are going to occur. I know about budgets. I have one at home. I get a paycheck. I got a budget. If I don't budget right, and don't pay my credit card on time, I get a late fee. So, the budget that you talked about, we're going to get a fee, a late fee, a penalty for not having it on time? That's not our fault if we vote it down. You guys know that. It's the people who make the budgets fault for not doing it right the first time. I know you need to keep it within the budget. I know it's hard. I know, it's none of you personally. You have numbers to work with, you have a job to do. These teachers are awesome. The recommendation for student-teacher ratio is 19. 19 for these children to be successful, to not have discipline problems. My daughter's in class of 25. She struggles every day, and the only reason she's making that is because she cares and she tries. So far, you guys have done a great job. Don't fail us now. Please don't fail us now. We need to find another way to keep our teachers. And that late bus, I'm a middle-class taxpayer. I have to work. My husband has to work. If I don't have a late bus, she doesn't play sports. Thank you.
My name is Eric Cooper. I am a resident taxpayer and teacher, professional educator in this district. Heard from Mrs. Kestner, who said that 80-minute classes are not working. They most certainly are. There is one reason to go to a traditional schedule, one and one only, and that is to cut staff. You tell me Common Core learning standards, more beneficial to have a longer class period or less? As a professional educator, I know it is more beneficial to have a longer class period because Common Core learning standards wants you to delve deeper, they want a greater understanding, they want a greater benefit for the students. That is the only thing that Common Core learning standards are adapted to. Now, does that mean that 40-minute schools are not going to be able to do that? Absolutely not. You keep stating that the top five schools are on traditional schedule, the bottom five schools are on traditional schedule also. It is not about the schedule. It is about the dedicated staff, it is about students who are dedicated to their education. Let's stop looking at this as the bottom line. There is more to education than the bottom line. The tax levy is not, is not at the level that it could be. I pay taxes in this district. According to, unless I'm incorrect, according to our PowerPoint that we saw earlier, we are below... $60 to $100 a year? That's a cup of coffee a day for a month and a half. I think we're going in the wrong direction. My personal opinion, I think we need to do more. Thank you.
My name is Carol King, and I teach first grade in GLP. And I do that as a teacher either. I never do when I come from my way up here. I just wanted to speak as a parent to be honest, and we are the staff that we're all going to support and do everything that we can to help. As a parent, I have two daughters who graduated from Eden. Myself, I graduated from Eden, as have my brothers. And my parents chose this town because of the college town and the one-kill education that they were being offered, that we were not going to be available to us in the city if we wanted to continue to support public schools. When my daughters went to school here, they both went in different directions in their interests and their academic areas, and I have to say that my daughter Anna, who's at American University, has studied international studies of human rights and plans on going into human rights law. That's her interest. However, what really turned her on to that were the history courses she took and AP History. That teacher poured more into that course than I've ever seen with anyone else, and so did my child as a result. She got a five out of five on her exam and was very proud of that accomplishment, but was very quick to acknowledge the help that she got and the reason why she was able to do that. We cannot lose courses like that because if we lose our AP courses, the alternative is new staff. People who pay taxes already for their education should not have to pay on top of that another university for a course in the high school that their taxes should be able to supply for them. Many people don't have that extra money to spend $100, $200 for a course that their taxes should be supported already. And also, new staff courses are not accepted by all universities or colleges. There's no guarantee for that, as my daughter Emily found out when she tried to apply them to her secondary education. My daughter Emily was a music major. She went the other route into the arts. She was very talented. She was very smart, and she worked hard. However, we were very limited in the theory courses that were offered here at this time, and even though there was a theory course offered, there was one, she was deficient and ended up having to put more time past her four years in college to get the coursework done required for her two degrees. So I am telling you now, at that point in time, we were barely making the grade, and now if you take this away, you're telling children they're going to go into the arts field or music in the arts, that they are going to have to spend more money on their college education, a longer trial, go beyond the four years because they will not be prepared for it. And that will have the same effect on students who can't afford to pay for new staff and should be offered AP classes because they have the brains for it, the drive, the desire. Thank you.
Laura Beasley, I'm a math teacher here and treasurer of the ETA. I was not planning on speaking either, but one of the slides that you have there is a little disturbing to me because one of the things that we've been hearing over and over and over is how we're overstaffed. I think at 1.17% overstaffed was a number that was thrown out there. And the slide that you had in the presentation compared the drop in enrollment over the last 10 years to the drop in staff over the last 10 years. And what I would ask is that you actually look at the drop of enrollment compared to the drop in the teaching staff, because that staff includes everybody, from the cleaners to the bus drivers, to the administration, to the secretaries, to the groundspeople, to the teachers, and to the aides and the assistants. It's everybody. And the teaching staff has decreased in the last 10 years. We've also increased in special ed because of mandates. We've increased in the secretarial pool. We've increased in administration because of mandates. When I started working here, we had three building principals and an assistant principal. Now, we have a lot more administration, and I get it, we need curriculum, we need technology, we, student, people, personnel, Shawn Johnson, they're all mandated. I get that. But to look at the decrease in staff without comparing apples to apples here, I just think is unfair and it's misleading. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes? Okay.
No, you're okay. Good.
My name is Colin Gayle. I'm an APTA building coordinator for the junior, senior high school, and I also serve children in the district. I also wasn't planning on speaking, so I'm sorry. It's a little scattered, but I guess I feel very uneducated about, I know that we need to pass this budget or else it would be worse for the school district, but I don't think I have enough knowledge of what exactly is your plans for the teachers and making the classrooms more students and less teachers. So when do we find that information out? I mean, I just feel like the rumors are you're cutting all these teachers are truly going to cut teachers or, I mean, I think I need to know that before I vote. Can I get an answer to that?
Well, the current status is right now with the budget passed, or the budget plan is five reductions from the high school was put into the budget, but the problem we have is we had a $400,000 placeholder that we were hoping to get some flexibility on healthcare coverage. We did not get that, and because of that, we have a $400,000 gap that we still have to fill somehow.
It doesn't answer any kind of teachers, what teachers, is it math?
We don't know yet, but most likely we'll have to come in some sort through staff. We have been able to get some healthcare reductions through our current carrier. That's helped a lot.
Do you understand that a lot of people make decisions that are very important without the information?
I do.
And we know that the kids are going to have less help, and like a lot of just teachers, not just great teachers, their role models, their supporters, they make even good kids, which, and I know you guys have a very hard job, I agree with whatever it says, but these kids sometimes just go off the wrong path, and they need a teacher, that role model, to get them back on the right course.
Yeah, there is five reductions slated for the high school, and that's been on the table and been set for over a month, maybe two months now. So it's a minimum of five and maybe more, but that is something the administration is trying to figure out how to do the best.
And we're missing the kind of restrictions that, if it's just that, it's definitely going to be eliminated?
It's currently budgeted to be eliminated, yes.
So when do we find out? Do we have any say in any of these restrictions?
Those are ultimately, position elimination is ultimately the board's decision upon recommendation to the administration.
So as parents and staff, do we, how can we express our needs to what we feel is important?
We've offered multiple opportunities for that. We've had sessions, including ten.
Well, I know, but now, you know, we know there's going to be five. We know it's missing a kind of.
No, we've stated that for some time, so.
So there's nothing to say that's going to change?
We've taken input. We're still working on some variation. We're really trying to come up with the best solution possible.
I'm just, like, I'm a taxpayer.
I understand.
Steve, aren't we still like in a process? I mean, we're getting information all the time, and things keep on changing, and that's part of the process. They just keep changing. And so we don't know yet either. We don't know yet either.
One of the things that I'd like to say is that what we have done is to meet with the current insurance brokers to try to get a rating for next year, but we weren't able to get that number until last Friday. So we're just as much in the dark on some of these things than other people. And because our ratings through our current insurance policy change each year, we really don't know what it's going to be. And so we were able to just to get that number on Friday. Lorraine was able to take a look yesterday and today to see about what that means to us. So as Mrs. Henry is saying, some things are muddy, because if in fact it looks better, then it makes a big difference to us. And so I know it's late and that that causes so much angst, and if I were still a building principal, I would have just as much about what the schedule looks like as a principal, but we're trying just as hard as we can to get that information fast. But I can't expect Mr. Graff to take one day at Bosse's and have an answer to something I asked him. He deserves more time than that. And I'm not sure where some of these rumors are coming from, but I think it's unfortunate because it's creating quite a bit of distress to people. But honestly, I don't know the answer, so I don't know who other people think they do. I am really being honest.
And I appreciate your honesty, and I just hope that you try to involve our teachers.
Thank you.
My name is Paula Durrell, and I'm spinning off Michaela's reference to the teacher who spoke about the Rochester student, because I was at a winter conference for the NICE and it was Peter Appleton, CPA, who spoke on behalf of school budgets, and he informed us on how the presentation took place. And through a side note, he mentioned that there was the valedictorian of the Rochester school who was unable to not get into a SUNY school, not because of her grades, but because she didn't have an ample sampling of the coursework needed. Now, is this something we would like our students to be exposed to? The inability to get into a SUNY school? I think not. Last year, you and the board discussed ways for a three-year plan and anticipated challenges with the school budget. A motion was carried that you were going to be using reserves over the next several years. Now, all of a sudden, when I look at a budget and I see that you're not using reserves and you're going back to this $1.6 million, at what meeting did you now withdraw your proposal to use the reserves? And since I've been at all these meetings, I don't know when that is, so please refresh my memory at what time you're retracting your commitment to use the surplus money. I was part of the insurance committee, and I started looking from 19, the group looked at 19 plans down to five plans back when we were looking at insurance. That was a seven-month-long process. We wanted to make sure all the groups were considered with their personal needs, and we now had one week, the even teachers, the administrators, the CSEA had one week to make a decision. Even the New York rep said, and I quote, "You don't have time to do this because it takes 60 to 90 days to convert the process. This is only something you can consider for the following year." Yeah, we're made out to look like the bad guys because we did not take advantage of this one. I was part of the health insurance committee, and I know that when you budgeted, it was 14%, and we've been trying to stay in contact with Pete Lovering, our insurance agent, and in doing so, knowing that by putting off, figuring out what our increase in insurance rate because of our claims, it would be better if we waited as long as we did, and yes, we did. And so now he's anticipating we are going to be from 14% into mid-single digits. Now, I'm asking, is the board being reflecting in the adjusting of these plans due to the fact that again, because of our wellness and that we are actually being, using lost claims, that this is now having an impact on the less amount of insurance that we are going to be outcoming?
Paul, time is up, please.
I know, but with that said, I also want to know that part of negotiations, that the teachers did take a pay concession this year, and in the upcoming school year, we are increasing our insurance contribution an additional 5%. The key.
I'm Monica Donovan. I also did not plan to speak today and brought on a paste-up. Who knows? Mostly, I have a question for you. Considering that one of the board's goals is to get us to the top 10%, I want to ask if, what's that?
Top 10 schools.
Top 10 schools, excuse me. I want to ask if these things are going to get us there? Larger class sizes, few or no electives for students, loss of a gifted and talented program, and one administrator in an entire junior, senior high school. Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Jen Horshol. I am a parent in the district, and I did prepare something to say because if I speak off the cuff, I tend to cry. So it seems to me that the future of education in general, and especially education in Eden, is going backwards. So we are cutting teachers, support staff, and programs at an alarming rate. And I'd like to add on a personal note, and I've said this before at prior meetings. I moved to Eden with my husband and my family because my husband is a graduate of Eden. We came here because he loved it here. He loved his education. He loved the community. However, if we do not support this school and keep it strong, we will have no community to love. Our children will not move back here, and what will happen to Eden? So it's just my biggest concern as a parent. I will agree with the gentleman who stood up before, education is being demonized. Teachers do have large targets on their back, and I feel that it is horrible that districts in general are being held responsible for the financial woes of a community. I think the powers that be have done a wonderful job of diverting attention, I'm going to go on my soapbox a little here, from the real issues that will improve our financial health overall. We have issues in this town that need to be looked at and addressed to improve the financial stability. Your state spends more per capita on Medicaid than any other state, and this is not to bash any money towards the prison system. I know this I heard out, however, if you really take a hard look at it, spending on the prison systems has outpaced all other spending in U.S. programs with the exception of Medicaid. Why are we okay with providing more benefits to hardened criminals than our own children? No matter what. I think no matter what side of the education debate you fall in, when you want to preserve programming or decrease the taxes, I think we are all grounded in one common belief. We want a strong community and a secure future for our children. I think when it comes to education, local, state, and federal governments have pitted neighbors against each other by putting the burden of economic relief to lower taxes on the school district. The burden is unfair to our children and our community. There is no way, no way, we can cut our way to solvency or lower taxes, and we definitely cannot cut our way to the top 10. It's never going to happen. The state will continue to blame schools and put pressure while increasing mandates and decreasing funding. Districts, especially smaller ones like Eden, I fear, will be forced to make harder and harder decisions with each passing year. Eventually, Eden will no longer be a desired district or place to live. So I ask all residents, including board members, write your politicians. More importantly, come to school or meetings, continue to voice your concerns for the future of the community. Thank you.
I'm Patty Kraus, and first I wanted to thank at the last board meeting that was very brief, public speaking, we weren't allowed to speak, but there were a lot of board members that stayed after and did respectfully talk to us. You know, it was wonderful that you did that, so I do want to thank you. And to the two that did not come back, may have had other obligations or whatever, but that just showed your character. You probably would have at least told us.
Excuse me. We're not here to make personal attacks. If you have a statement to make, please make it.
No, I was just making.
No, I understand what you're doing.
Okay. Second, do you guys have to see the penis there? Do you guys see the ad that was placed about all Ms. McKenna's duties? Yes? No? Yes? No? Okay. Well, I did have a call from a board member that was not privy to everything that she does, and I was actually told also too that administrative, the people that are in the administrative positions, you will be not getting all of her jobs. So over and beyond what you already have, now you're going to have a lot more. That's disturbing. That's very disturbing. And I was also actually told too by the person that I was speaking with, "Well, can you please", which was a board member, "Can you please give me the job description of what the principal is?" That is not my responsibility as a resident. That's your responsibility to know what you're cutting, the responsibilities that are being cut. So that was very, very disturbing that you guys didn't even know. I don't know if everybody didn't know everything that she does, but I think decisions, whenever you are making cuts, you have to look at the whole big picture, not just the dollar sign, all these other teachers that you're cutting also too. So.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I'm seeing from an outside point of view is that this board does not work well with the entire administration, teachers, or other personnel.
Ms. Kraus?
Our community deserves open conversations and discussions on matters that apply to our children.
My name is Callie Murch, and I'm a speech language therapist for the district. Speaking to this group and to you is totally outside my comfort zone. But what message I get to say is, so in my heart, I need to say it. I was on the committee for the Eden Autism Walk, which was two weeks ago. We had over 500 people from the Eden community coming to walk. It was freezing cold that day. Any of you that were there know what the weather was like. We were in scarves and earmuffs. I'm guessing very few of the people that walked knew the importance of having a sensory room for kids with autism. And they came because they had faith in the special education department. They had faith in the parents who were running it. They had faith in Shawn Johnson. They knew that if the teachers were out there asking for something this important for a small group of Eden kids, that they needed to come up with support. Well over 500, and we made a ton of money. I guess my feeling, and I am not a new taxpayer, I have to agree with the comments that were made, with your faith in the people of Eden. I was so impressed that day. I'm guessing if you were to go to them and say, "We want to raise your taxes," they would say, "What programs can we save by raising your taxes?"
Good evening. One thing that hasn't been said tonight, and I want to take the opportunity.
Could you identify yourself, please?
My name is Paul Shepherd. I live at 3196 East Stritch Street. One thing that was not said tonight, that I want to take the opportunity, is National Educator Day. And I, as a taxpayer, a parent, and a voter, want to thank all the teachers in the district for what they do for our students under a lot of stress that's going on. And not all brought on by just the decisions that are being made here.
Oops. Sorry. Keep going.
I get an extra few minutes. Thank you. So I want to thank the teachers. And not all the stress is being brought on by local. Some of it is being brought on by the government above us that we can't control. These new AP PR standards that are being mandated put a lot of stress on the principal. Now you've removed the vice principal. Now, they do about 2,000 to 2,500 referrals a year. How is he going to do all the evaluations that he's now being mandated by the state and keep up with discipline of all the students now that you've got? That's a safety issue. When he has to leave the building for training, and the superintendent that's new needs to leave the building for the annual monthly meeting and carrier for training, now you have two administrators in this building. If Shawn Johnson gets called for a special ed emergency in another building, you're down to one administrator in this building. In this timeframe, one administrator in this building that's asking for trouble. You're planning on possibly bringing up the sixth grade to this building. Then, I was told by some of the people I talked to, well, we'll have to readdress the assistant principal's position when that happens. So you're going to cut it and then readdress it? Is this something for, because we can't afford it, or is there other motives behind the cutting of this position? You know, you're not looking into the future. You set goals that are on your website of where you want this district to be. While you're not heading in that direction. By the response tonight, we don't want that assistant principal's gone. We elect. We pay taxes, just like all of you. We voted you guys in there to do a job for us, not to do a job for each individual that are sitting here. I'd like you to reconsider that position and a few of the other cuts.
Anyone else? Last chance.
My name is Don Johnson. I got two kids that go to school here. And it's scary. I agree with what that man said. The teachers have got a bull's head in that. But some of these teachers are some of the finest I've met. On the other hand, you said that the taxes have gone up about 68% in 10 years. Might have doubled. What scares me is if we keep going with the higher taxes, my kids ain't going to be able to stay here. There's won't be no jobs. But on the other hand, if we make the cuts, we're going to cut their education. I don't know what the answer is. Everybody, nobody wants nothing cut, but when nobody, where are we going to come up with the money? This is just the beginning. You think this year's bad? Next year it's going to hit even worse? It's coming. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I don't want to push my foot back now because we taxed ourselves out of the situation, but I also don't want to cut programs here. I don't know the interest. That's why we elected you folks, and hopefully you're doing the right thing.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for your time. With that, I make a motion to enter executive session to discuss director of finance contract, driver ed contract, and employment history of a particular person.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for attending. Have a good evening.